After several hours, the cat did not make it. So I just wanted to let you know that our fire department protects not only our two-legged citizens, but also our four-legged citizens, and thank you very much.
I'd just like to make a comment that, in also recognizing the fire department, I'd like to recognize all of public safety and public works, because during this last storm, I think those of you who were here last year have saw significant improvement, and they just did a commendable job, and they should be recognized for it.
Okay. Now we're going to TNF, Planning Commission Recommendation Council. If I could ask Mr. Patton to come forward and do that for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member, city manager, coming. This is Master Plan 1501-001 Amendment. Can Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 23rd, 2015? Planning Commission recommended the following actions. Number one, they recommend approval of the applicant's request to modify the approved conditions for MP 0006-06 and the conditions as revised in the 2005 Master Plan Amendment, with the exception of condition number 14. Number two, recommend approval of the applicant's request to change the land use in Pods 9 from attached townhomes to detached single-family homes. Number three, Planning Commission recommended approval of adjusting the number of lots in Pods 5 and 6 to reflect new ownership of those lots. Number four, Planning Commission recommended the allowance of the density transfer between Pods L1 through L11 as shown on the master plan. Number five, recommended approval of relocation of the guardhouse to the proposed location shown on the master plan submitted with this amendment. Number six, Planning Commission recommended denial of the applicant's request to designate the required second ingress point as emergency-only use. Number seven, recommended that the applicant present a plan for the expansion of the amenity elements to Mayor and City Council for their approval. And last, number eight, Planning Commission recommended that building permits be withheld from Pods 6, 7, 8, and 9 until the second access point has been completed.
Do you want to, do you want to speak to the next item since it's kind of involved in this whole process before we open it up to the council? Which is item G, Discussion or Request Abandon Portion of Laurel Canyon Parkway?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council member. As a separate item, companion with this overall proposed amendment to the master plan, the applicant has approached.
Yeah, I hear you.
The applicant has approached the city as to the application and request that City Council consider abandoning that portion.
Hold on a little bit closer to you, Ken, if you don't mind, or get a little closer to keep reaching.
Scroll up on.
No, pick the plug. Notebooks on the thing.
Hear me now? Anyway, Mr. Mayor, council members, the applicant as part of this overall process did submit a request that City Council consider abandonment of that portion of Laurel Canyon Parkway from the existing gate location to the proposed new gate location.
Is that, I understand about four or five acres? Is that what that encompasses there?
Somewhere around there, 4.816 acres.
Okay. Okay, and if any questions or discussion, Councilman?
We need to open a discussion, I guess, to find out. Honestly, I feel where these problems started. It started when SEC wanted to buy the properties. They have not done adequate work in research on what the, what the master plan had in it. The master plan was there, it was present, it was there for them to look at, for them to study if they had questions. They should have come and asked questions to the city at that time, rather than moving forward, without questioning what the master plan had. It is also my opinion that Mrs. Dillard was hired to come in here and try to fix a problem, and he's doing a fine job of it. I can tell you, he's very persuasive, but still, either SEC ignored looking at the plan, or they just decided not to pay any attention to it. It is not the city's obligation to go to SEC and say, "Look, here's the master plan. If the master plan calls for an additional entrance." That is not our responsibility, it is the responsibility of the people who own the property. They bought the property, they didn't do their homework, therefore, they have to go out and hire a high-powered attorney to come in here and try to fix this problem.
Jack?
I appreciate the good turnout tonight, and it just shows how involved our community is. I actually went with a couple of other gentlemen Saturday out to where the temporary gate is, and we looked over the property, and we did make several other trips all the way around, trying to find different access points to the exit. And I've lived here all my life, so I know Honeydew Lane, it is very dangerous. We've had several deaths on that road, some I know personally, and the road has never been in very good condition, or a lot of traffic. It is scary to think that you would want to use that as an access or ingress or ingress point. I would not recommend it, that's for sure, but, you know, emergency, maybe. I know that road's been washed out before. I know that the condition, as Mr. DeLucas talked about, have happened, and it's been in disrepair several times before. There is a Show Creek Road, I believe, not Show Creek, Show Creek Road, that is a possibility. And there's also one on Sam Nelson's route back there as well. We actually looked at all those points last Saturday, and I don't know, personally don't know which one would be the best, but I feel like there's got to be a better solution to it than using Honeydew Lane.
I wanted to echo what Mr. Dillman was just saying. I'm very familiar with that road, Honeydew Lane, going back into Rock Creek Estates, and it is absolutely cannot, it can't handle the traffic it's got now. And I absolutely think alternate locations for another inch should be found, because it would be absolutely much more economical, the other two solutions that were mentioned, or some other for the developer to do that, and much safer for all the residents, I believe. So I think that's what should happen, they should look for some for themselves.
Thank you. Let me say a couple, a couple things here. I feel very strongly that, you know, the city, this initial issue, when this first came up, and the master plan was approved, predates anyone sitting on this council right now. It happened before. The 199 number was an ordinance in effect, as I understand it, at the time. So there should really be no question about, I guess, the knowledge of that, and the fact that in the original plan, there was shown a second entrance. For some reason, whatever that reason was, the city did not apparently force the issue as building permits were issued and the growth occurred in subdivision. It was really only brought to our attention, really, a few months ago, that we really should have, but we are definitely aware that that is the case today. And I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, without a second entrance, certainly, we may have, the city may even have some liability out there, especially since now that we know. If you don't know, it's one thing, but once you know that it exists, it's an ordinance, and we are, we're not enforcing it, and did not enforcing it, you know, I think that's could be a problem. But I think, I think we do need, do need that second entrance. I mean, you know, I can, I can see where a tornado or something could come through, and, you know, preaching to the choir here, I know, because I think most everyone wants to see that second entrance and be able to get in and out of there safely. And the question, whether it's an emergency exit or a full exit, I tend to think a full exit really makes, makes more sense. With regard to the amenities, which I, all of us have gotten a lot of emails, most of you know that, I guess, most of you, I guess I've heard from most of you. Anyway, you know, we've got emails, we understand what your concerns are there, and we, I'm sure we share some of those with you, but we also, we also respect the development that's coming as well, or the expansion. As far as the amenities go, you know, it does, it does seem that if you have an expansion in numbers of homes, or perhaps should be a commensurate expansion of the amenities. And whether or not that's an issue for us to decide, you know, may or may not be the case, but I do believe, as one of the speakers indicated, the road abandonment, I don't know that we have to abandon that road, don't know that we have to, but, you know, we may well want to discuss, and I believe, I believe the applicant indicated that they were going to do their best to try to work with the residents to come up with an acceptable, hopefully, an acceptable amenity package for any expansion there. With regard to the entrance back, back to that, you know, if, it could be thought that maybe if we, if we approve the developer to put the entrance there, we still don't know whether this can be an open entrance, because to my knowledge, there's been no official approval by the county to do that. Now, I may be wrong about that, but I, I haven't seen anything officially from the Board of Commissioners that says, "Yes, we're going to allow this applicant to exit or enter on that road," as it is. Now, I know there's been some questions about the amount of money and so forth, but I just don't know if, you know, I don't know how the Board of Commissioners might respond, you know, to that request. So we could say, "Build it, build it, go ahead and build it, you've met our requirements," and then it would be up to the county to say yes or no, an opening to get it. But it's really not an entrance to me unless it's, it's open, you know, it's got to be open. Another, another point that, and I don't know how it can be, if it can be resolved or not, but it would appear to be that that second gate ought, ought to be more in the Laurel Canyon area than in the Soleil area, because in the, the people in Laurel Canyon are not able to, they would have to go through two gates to get out through that second entrance, actually. And if it's in the Laurel Canyon area, then the people in Soleil just come through their gate, and they go out the second entrance, or probably knock down the hill, but, you know, they probably would go down the, to that new entrance. But anyway, there's, there's a lot for this council to decide, and I'll hush and let someone else, if they would like to, to speak. Anyone else?
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
I got a couple of points, Mr. Mayor. One is just a little simple analogy for a simple guy, and...
No boys?
Couldn't be one, anyway, but anyhow. You were speeding, and I was using this earlier, if I was speeding going home up 140 to Great Sky, where I live, and the speed limit was 45, but I've been traveling 60 for the last 10 years, and I get stopped by the sheriff up there for quick speed. I think I can say, "Well, look, I've been doing this for 10 years, and I haven't been stopped." You're supposed to waive that, because I've been doing this for 10 years. My second point is this, is that I'm supporting both the second plan, I am supportive, I want to see this resolved. So far, we've seen some plan, but I would think that the SEC needs to go back to the planning stage and try to come up with another one. There probably is going to be a requirement of a third entrance going out the back in it, and that, if we had it, that would answer the question. Then we could have an emergency gate like proposed, which I don't think would be a problem. We could open that for the emergency, but they're going to have to build that third gate at sometime in the future. Don't spend eight and a half million dollars. I, I agree with that, that's, that's a lot of money to spend for that road, but is there another one, like the property we were talking earlier about, about that property, where we have the sewer, the sewer line?
Old Show Creek.
Old Show Creek? Now, to investigate something of that nature, or investigate that would answer the question is at the third exit, going out to Sam Nelson, which is technically not going to help too much on the traffic going up to Sam Nelson and then back down 140, but it would answer the question of having the second entrance, and then just open that other area just for emergency. Come back to us with something like that, because I think everybody on this council, and I think even all y'all want this thing to go through and be successful, and I just believe SEC needs to go back to a little bit more planning and thinking outside the box.
I question both the police and the fire departments. If that were an emergency entrance only, or exit only, but primarily entrance, what use would it get from us in serving that community? And most of the conditions, if we take like this winter storm, we have no guarantee, because we don't treat those roads over there, we treat the main parkway. The likelihood of us selecting that entrance to use in an emergency is very, very low. We would be going up that hill. As you know, we treated that hill immediately, in this last winter storm, and that's our intention moving forward, and that type of thing. But if they had to choose an entrance to go into, especially fire, where now we're building the station, which is just down the street, they're going to go up that hill, they're not going to be going in the back way. So just, you know, just a point of, you know, in reality, how, how useful would it be for emergency?
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Russ?
Yeah, I've listened to all these discussions, and I think the real showstopper is the people in the audience. You know, the reason why this development has been successful so far is you. You tell your friends, you tell your people around the country, "Come on, retire down here, it's a great place." Well, maybe you'll stop telling them that. Not to diminish the value of your home, but the fact is, you don't want a neighbor to come to you and say, "Hey, I moved here because of you, this is trash." I came to Ken 10 and 1/2 years ago, and one of the decisions that we made in terms of where we lived is how many entrances there was. I moved into River Green, had two entrances, I wouldn't even thought of. We looked at Bridgemill, at the time, I don't remember, Bridgemill may have had one or two entrances, 3,500 homes, and now I think they have three. It just seemed like a traffic jam just getting into this subdivision. I wouldn't have considered, I looked at Great Sky, they had two, they got a front and back, which is great, they got hills there, unbelievable. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, you need a second entrance. There will be a second entrance built, whether it's by the SEC or somebody else, you'll get one, but maybe they'll fail, and the next guy will do it for you, because if they can't sell homes, somebody's got to put a second entrance in to give this. I think there are limitations to what we as a council can demand in terms of amenities, but ultimately, that has to help sell homes also. Same exact issue, don't tell your friends to come here anymore, and they'll stop selling homes, and maybe they'll realize they have to do that. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.
Let me say that, of course, we don't, we're voting at our work session, the earliest we can vote on the zoning case would be on the 19th, between two weeks from the 19th. You're welcome to stay, that's the place that we're going to talk about a bit this year. Hopefully, he's moving along the outside.
I appreciate it. I'm glad we're having a good time. Thank you. I'm glad we're having a good time. We don't know anybody, just know us and know them, that's all. I'm going to slide, I'm going to slide. Our driver's left hand. We don't know anybody, just know us and know them, that's all. I'm going to slide, I'm going to slide. 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 I know it.
Well, you would never see me sitting on that... Now, when you step up to get a better take, I was sitting on that ledge.
Okay, if you would, go ahead and... we're gonna go ahead and get started again. Please take your seat. We still got a bit of meeting to go here. So, we're gonna have to move right along here. Considered in our whole business, reports and updates on city goals. I would suggest that we move that to the next meeting unless somebody has a special report that they want to give. Okay, is that okay if you move that to the next meeting, or you want to give a special report?
I don't have a special report. We're gonna talk about the, I think, target on there, the very next meeting, Heritage Park and Master Plan.
Yes, yeah, we're trying to hear about that. Okay, so we're gonna put the other... Susan, if you don't mind, put that, reports and goals on the next work session. Item B, discussion of Heritage Park and Master Plan. Mr. Allen?
Huppin.
Yeah.
Ah, Mr. Huppin, if you would, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I will try to be fairly brief in an update on Heritage Park and Master Plan amendments. This has been an ongoing project with a consulting firm for, got over, well over a year, maybe even close to two years. What you have in, you're looking at the screen, first slide, that is the existing Heritage Park in its current configuration, with walking trails. It does show the river and that sort of thing. Next slide shows a bit more about the existing condition and how much of Heritage Park is within floodway and then how much is within floodplain. And you'll note that there's one little no rise area that is outside of floodplain where the current parking is located. Add on top of the existing conditions with the floodway and floodplain, you also have the Edel River buffer requirements and stream requirements as specified by the state. And some of these buffer requirements weren't put in place, especially the fifty and seventy-five foot buffer requirements came about from Georgia EPD after Heritage Park was initially built. Next slide shows one in the last option that had been looked at and talked about in regards to possibilities of what could be done in the way of additional passive as well as recreational opportunities. To blow it up a little bit in the northeast corner, if you will, where the existing parking lot shows, or the existing parking lot that was in this area, has been amended and changed around. Still doesn't have thirty parking spaces up there. But this option does have a playground, picnic pavilions, and restrooms besides those thirty parking spaces. It does continue in with the trails, crosses over the stream into an area that currently has some of the mounds and that sort of thing. What is in that area and what is possible that could be done would include an additional sixty parking spaces as well as courts, which are sized, the ones in green in that area, that would serve, could serve as a single basketball court, or it could serve as four pickleball courts. Also has the ability to be set up and configured for tennis courts. The bottom section that is in here with dashed lines is a mirror image of that in which you could have two basketball courts, or you could have eight pickleball courts, or you could have a couple of tennis courts as well. Still, you'd be able to retain some of the mounds that are out there in this area here. Like I said, this does pick up and add sixty additional parking spaces. Then below some of the mound area, there are two rectangles shown there that can be used as either exercise stations, or bocce courts, or shuffleboard. There are additional sections of trails that are proposed to be added within that section of the overall option for additional recreational opportunities at Heritage Park. These are examples of basketball courts in the upper left. That is an example of a pickleball court. And then this is what could be used for a bocce or shuffleboard, and of course, exercise stations. Back in the very upper northeast corner, we talked about playground, picnic pavilions, restroom. These are just some examples of picnic pavilions and playgrounds that are possible for consideration within that area. Then down along the riverfront portion in this area, you see that there's the option to add additional trails out closer to the river that currently do not exist in that area that actually would allow people to get a little bit closer to the river. These could be multi-use as well. These are examples of hard surface multi-use trails on the top and soft surface trails on the bottom. The last sheet is a preliminary cost estimate for all of the improvements. The total amount is a million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. That includes all of the landscaping. That includes rain gardens, paving, base, all hardscape with courts, nature trails, play areas, shade structures. There would be two restrooms. Forgot to show you the one near the ramp and accessibility by the YMCA and the other end of the shopping center, but there is another accessible route on that end of the park that would have a restroom as well. These numbers are preliminary estimates. It does not take into account certain species types, if you will, as far as the landscaping. All of the paving, we did assume would match what was installed with the original construction. Their Heritage Trail with six inches of concrete and a twelve-inch aggregate base underneath that for the hardscape or hard surface type trails. These figures do not include any kind of a contingency. In this PowerPoint, it does not include, there was another option that the consultants put together that does not have hardly any active recreation other than adding trails. I can pass out for you all a copy of that other alternate option. This one does have significant amounts of vegetation showing up in that very northeast corner. This option did propose picnic areas, playground area, as well as a skate park. Not to belabor it that much, but with this option, other than the additional trails that were added that are shown with the dashed lines in some of the areas, the skate park, the playground, restroom, were the major additions. There is a spreadsheet that does show and reflect the total cost of this and you will see that that is two-point-four million. And like I said, it does show extensive landscaping and shrubberies and trees, small trees and large trees. We do not feel that this option provided enough, if you will, for city council's consideration as it relates to trying to get more active recreation as a possibility within Heritage Park. But I'm here to answer any questions that any of you might have in regards to either of these proposals and options.
Mr. Goodman?
Ken, could you put that first slide back on me?
Yes, sir.
Now, you said up in the right-hand corner, there's a, would be...
There's some...
Parking there?
Current car being up in that area now.
Okay, and there would be, what other sport did you say?
Up in that area, there was a, the first option showed playground and a small skate park.
Is there one playground that's all that's planned for that? The reason I ask that, New Park hasn't even opened, just a soft open yet. And I've been over there with my children and grandchildren already and it's just packed already. And, you know, I think if we're gonna plan another park, we should look at putting at least two playgrounds in there because it is just being used a tremendous amount right now. I just couldn't believe how many people. We had to wait in line in order to even use it. And it's not even opened yet.
And the second option is kinda hard to see. And I don't know if you can see it on your computer screen. If you can't... Sorry about that. I thought you all had screens there.
Well, Ken, I like this one the best, obviously, but I have another question. In the middle, where we now have a big open field, where we have, we've had people, we've had the airplanes and helicopters and things of that nature come in. Are we cutting that away? I mean, are we doing away with them by putting these circles in there? I can't tell you how. Is that what we're doing?
No, you're not really taking anything away.
That's more of the...
You are increasing the walking area on this, which quite honestly, some of those could be eliminated. You know, you could even leave it exactly like it is now as far as walking goes, I believe we looked at, except for where you have to change it due to the additions up there and here where the tennis courts and pickleball courts and so forth would be located up near where those hills and humps are now.
Well, I just know that in the past when we've had those, I guess it's around Military Day or something, we do it. We've had the helicopters come in and things of that nature. And it seems to always be a great thing. It really brings a lot of people there. And of course, when we did barbecue festivals and things of that nature, I would think we will end up doing a lot more festivals in the future. That seems to be a big, big point. And what I'm going back to is I see a lot of shrubberies in these areas. So, you know, will that, will that cut the areas down to where we can't have a large area to, if we want to show, movie it, you know, on that, at night? Or if we want to do a big...
This is the current configuration.
Yeah, that's the current one. And it's much more open than what this one seems to be with all these wells.
There are still open areas with that option. The main field in the center that you're holding up there is where that little quasi amphitheater is now. In that area there.
You know, you know what I'm talking about when we do the helicopters out there and all of them, and we do that every, we're doing it every year. We didn't do it this last year. Will it be that big, or is this just a portion like the size of our amphitheater that we just built? I guess is what I'm asking. Because then, you know, once we get...
How many helicopters are you talking about and what type of size?
Talking about, no, you've been there. We've had six, eight helicopters down there.
Are they CH forty-sixes, Chinooks, are they, you know, Hueys?
Everything. They got all of them.
I bet you that. The size of those fields out there right now, those helicopters can get in.
Even with this proposal, I would have a tendency to think that individual helicopters could touch down in the center of each of those six fields.
Let me ask you this question then. Okay, I have a theater that we just built. Is this center circle, is it much bigger than that?
Well, there's more available space with amphitheater in the new park upstream.
Well, I would say we really need to increase this here because when we actually start having events and bringing people... Like you said, if people showed up tonight, if you have a really good event there, you're gonna have a lot more people than can get in that one little circle. That amphitheater up there, I've already been told by several people, and I've done events for years. I've already been told that, you know, once people find out about that, that we're going to be stretching out over to our walking track. If we've got nothing but shrubs there, I'm just wondering, you know, at the planning stage, I would think, I love it. I love the way you planned it, but I think we need to look at maybe making some of these areas more open.
And there again, Mr. Godwin, this is just a option and suggestion.
Okay.
And part of the reason for some of the landscaping and the trees is to break up some of the area to reduce some of the... some of the area to reduce some of the heat island with the concrete and things of that nature. I can probably do some calculations for you and come up with acreage within each of the circles and that sort of thing and get that information back to you.
Thank you.
But back to the playground area in this up here, and like I said, you can see it a little better on the 11 by 17, and inside the irregular oval, it shows a darker brown surface that there's potential to add to, if you will, one playground area. Within that up there, you see that the picnic pavilions are located towards the outside of that. There's a special material that has to go in, in and around the playground areas to meet ADA requirements, but there's multiple options available in regards to that area as well. And you can add to and take away from playground areas.
How many parking spaces would you say this, this park right here has?
Existing today or this proposal?
Yeah, the one down there and the one you proposed up there, the one that already, you said there was 30 spaces on one, and there was 60.
Was there 60, 90 spaces total with this option? We've picked up additional parking spaces. I think it's about 45 additional parking spaces above what's down there now. I don't think there are 23, 25 spaces total.
Yeah, that's right. Well, that lot that's in front of, by, by the old cotton mill, it's for sale, or was for sale, is that's not ours, right?
No, so that is not owned by the city.
But if it were purchased by us, how many people, how many yards would it park?
Well, that's what, about an acre.
About an acre.
You should be able to get at least 35, 40 spaces if not more.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Ken, I'm sorry, Glenn.
I think what he's presenting is a conceptual design, and this is gonna go through many reiterations before we get to a final design. And so this is, you know, this is step one, and I'm sure by the time we get to the point of where we actually do this, we'll have changed it significantly.
Now, this, this is really a result of, probably a couple of years ago, the council really wanted to add amenities to that park down there. There's a lot of open space that really is sort of useless, really, and, you know, we know it's floodplain, and you can get out and walk through it and stuff like that, or maybe play catch or something out there, but we wanted a little more activity there and to make, to sort of maximize the use of that area. There's a tremendous amount of area there, and particularly if we could get the, you know, the, the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, and the playground equipment in there, I think that would, that would really enhance the usability of that park, too. And I think, I think it'd be really good to come from. Mr. Mayor, you would do next, okay?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. It would enhance that. You know, that's gonna, that'd be reminded that it's a huge field if we cut grass. Oh, do we cut grass? But a couple of questions. One may be directed to Mr. Cummings, but do we have, if we have SLOSS, it looks like it might be going away, but in the parks area that we can build, put $2 million into parks over the next couple of years?
I'm not sure what the balance is in the parks of SLOSS six, that Mr. Inger would know. We don't?
Probably not, sir. It, it may be something we have to consider with our next sales tax.
And that comes in June 16th for a vote, does it not?
It'll be two years from this summer, we'll have discussions and planning.
Okay.
So we have, do you think we have to wait that long?
If you don't have the money, you'll have to wait.
Of course. We can issue a bond, just like the county did. Nathan, do you know how much recreational sales tax we get on a monthly basis?
It is, it is not segregated like recreation, public safety, whatever. We get approximately 225, 250,000 or more per month, and it doesn't, it's not tagged one or the other.
But it's supposed to go in certain directions?
Yes, it is.
Isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what proportion of that 250,000 a month would, would be designated for recreation?
I'll have that, I'll have that exact number for you in just a minute.
Okay.
While, while he's checking, are we gonna need to look at the screen anymore? Probably not. Mr. Pat, can I ask, probably got the floor here. In, in looking at this, I know it's just a natural rendition, but in jamming some of these things up here to try to get a little of everything in here, like the exercise and the various courts, basketball players and pickleball players are quite different. And we got plenty of space over at Edelwark Park to put some basketball courts and have, say, pickleball over here or vice versa, that don't, let's not limit ourselves to have to jam all this in here just because it's Heritage Park. We got space over there running out of here that we can use.
And this was just, if you will, to show that there are more than one option available for consideration with courts in that area.
Right.
You also have to remember, just like at the Edelwark River Park, a major portion of this is within floodway.
Right. The, the parts that I'm talking about is up behind the concession stand, which is out of floodway.
Yes, sir, at the river, that's even out of floodplains.
Yes.
Christiane, you have something?
I just had one come in, something I've heard mentioned before by people that have held festivals. The big open field we have now is kind of intimidating to people that hold festivals because they say if you can't fill it up, it looks like you're not serious.
Yeah.
And so a design like this, where they create smaller spaces, would make it much more conducive to mini festivals. You could actually hold two or three at a time.
Yeah. That's totally.
Mr. Rush? Ken, I think the Heritage Park was built with a grant from the state of Georgia. I think GDOT may have been involved with it, is that correct?
There were some federal funds that were used for some of the construction, yes.
And I think they set the parameters for the concrete. I mean, that's part of the reason why we ended up with six, six-inch concrete and a 12-inch base, is that right?
Well, and part of that also has to do with that's in the floodway, and you've gotta have enough of a thickness, that when it's all underwater, it's not gonna float away.
Right, right, that's part of it. But here's my question is this, is that it looks like there's an awful lot of concrete going to be either torn up or changed, and that, but we're gonna have to match that same spec regardless, right?
Correct, with any of the hard-type surface trails that would be put in, and that's what we assumed in those dollar amount calculations, of matching what was done with the initial. A lot of the existing would not necessarily have to be torn up. Some of it would, but not a major portion.
Some of it would tie in.
Yes, a lot of the new would tie in with the existing, and we're adding in between what's out there to create these smaller field areas and that sort of thing.
These walkways that go down to the, to the river, they, they also have to be coated for Georgia power trucks that are gonna drive over them because they're gonna intercept.
At that point.
I don't know, it looks like, it looks to me like you're so close to the river, you're gonna be underneath those power lines.
No.
And those potentially are gonna be soft-type trails, adjusted back.
So there's gonna be a trail running along the river?
Yes.
Oh, okay, soft though. But, but I thought that the Georgia power easement went right over the top of where these come down to the river, because they're not that close to the river, I don't think. They're ways away.
Yeah.
They run through our, our fields right now. They run right over the top of the fields, so I would assume that you're contemplating paths that go right under them.
There's enough room to move one way or the other.
Yes, this would go underneath and over, if you will, underneath the line and over the Georgia power easement. But in regards to the heavy trucks, that sort of thing, you know, again, those sections could be soft so that you don't break up concrete and that sort of thing.
Well, six-inch concrete, six-inch concrete might hold up on it, too. I mean, I, I mean, just give me a chance to finish.
There are ways that you can design it with strength and things of that nature that would reduce the possibility that a heavy Georgia power truck would break it up.
I have one last question. You know, we're, it seems like you got an awful lot of ideas to pack into this section that's up high out of the floodplain, and that's, is that the way it has to be? Is there anything that can move down into that floodplain that doesn't risk being washed away, or does everything have to be outside the floodplain?
Went up there because it's, it's gonna be much easier to try to do those kinds of improvements and those types of active recreational opportunities outside of the floodway. Even as this is laid out and proposed, it's still gonna require no rise study be done before you could actually move to engineering detailed drawings, even for this.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, this question might be for Glenn, Bobby, and Nathan, possibly. Talking about how we can fund this, but we also have another project that's sitting real close to coming on stream about the same time I would think this would, and it's the trails completing and joining in Heritage with Bowlin. So, the question is that we were gonna, I guess we would attempt to use SLOSS if we have SLOSS in two years, and that's still up in the air. If we don't use SLOSS, then can we have a bond to do both?
Construction money, as I thought, had been budgeted in this year for the completion of that section from the bulkhead, if you will, for the bridge over the river.
Yes.
Connect to Edelwark.
That's Edelwark, I'm talking about by Heritage to Bowlin.
From Heritage to Bowlin.
Yeah, and include, include this and Heritage to Bowlin as one large project. Issue a bond.
You can only do a general obligation bond, or you have to have SLOSS passing where the voters have also authorized. The voters got the vote on either way.
Or you could do the back door, okay? I mean, I don't, that's where we got, where we are in that.
How about double up, back door in the back room?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I like the way you talk.
Well, you could really be the building authority like everything else.
That's what I'm saying, that's what he got, that's what he got.
Oh, okay. I would, the ideal way is SLOSS seven.
But we're talking about three, four years. I'll be dead by then.
No, no.
And I would point out that we can reapply for land conservation fund grants, again, for some of these improvements, like what we had done on that section of the trail between Heritage and Bowlin. That will come up later on this year, so between grants and impact fees, you know, we are looking at trying to program, if you will, and budget several years ahead, if you will, for the provision of recreation and things of that nature. But if you don't start laying some of it out and putting it on paper so you can see it.
But we've got, we've...
Hold up then, Mr. Rush.
I just, Dan Owen has tried to put that Bowlin to Heritage Trail on the front burner here. What, what is your estimate of the, wasn't it about 680 or something, 680,000 dollars?
It's gonna be a lot more than that.
It's gonna be a...
We ran into the issue of, the original idea was to run under the power lines, that's where you get into the big trucks driving over there. And so if you move it closer to the river, you're building lots of small bridges. So the next step would be to get that planned and figure out how much that costs.
You'd have to go back to an alternative option for a layout for that section of the trail. You'd have to re-engineer. There are some easements and/or properties that never were acquired in regards to the engineering plans that were done, showing the bulk of it underneath the Georgia power easement as well. That's part of the reason, I think, original concept was for that section of the trail to go underneath Georgia power easement because there's already an easement there, and it would, would have saved the city acquisition money to purchase easement across other properties. But Mr. Dyer is right, there, even with what was done as an engineering standpoint, at the estimated 680,000, there were two bridge crossings of, one of a creek and another of a intermittent creek, little ravine.
We, we need to move on now. We've got, we've got a long way to go, so we'll, this, this will be coming up as we go along, but at least we've got something to think about going down in the next discussion.
As always, Mr. Mayor, any of you have questions or anything? Call me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would say discussions for our ordinance amendment, does anyone have any comments about that?
I can just make four quick comments. It's four changes, basically, to the current growler run. One is the size of the growler from 64 ounces to 128. The reason for that is they now have a new, and I don't know whether it's a device or whatever it is, but it's the ability to keep the beers from going flat as soon as it does now. It'll last longer at home. The only problem is the cost impact of doing it on a 64-ounce is prohibitive, so they wanna go to 128-ounce in order to cover the cost of this device or whatever it is, I don't quite understand. The other, second change is, right now, we're limited to eight ounces of testing. This ordinance will allow 16 ounces per day per person for testing or tasting. The other, the third change is the allowing of wine and beer tasting clubs to hold events up to twice a week in there for which there could be a charge made. And the last change is to allow sales of growlers at, at events. Right now, if the growler store has a booth at First Friday, they're not allowed to sell an actual growler there. The person then has to go to the store. This would allow them to purchase a growler right at that tent within the event.
The growler is the container?
Yes.
They're not allowed to sell a growler filled with liquid?
That's correct.
Now, this would allow them to sell a filled container.
Okay, anybody, has anybody got a problem with this?
I don't have any problem, I just have one technical question. Their, their hours end before midnight, right? Because I was thinking, yeah, at 11:30, you're gonna have one guy who's served 16 ounces twice at 12:30 a second. I mean, seriously, I'm just asking a technical question based on how long they're open. They, they close before that, so that's not an issue.
I think council needs a field trip over there.
Any other questions about that? Okay, now, we will consider this to be the first reading of that ordinance. I'm D., discussion of possible utility deposit policy.
Mr. Inger, if you would, please.
Any questions, gentlemen? Please, gentlemen.
I would like to make a correction on something I said just a few minutes ago, council, that the election, the discussions and the election for the SLOSS last was in July of 2010. I blew it up correct, Mr. Dyer. And that's a six-year SLOSS, but the time gets away from me a little bit. I think it's a year and a half from now. In 2016, we'll be talking, so it's not quite as far away as, as what I...
So do we make, do we make, on the SLOSS, do, who decides the distribution of the monies, like Park Recreation Fire, et cetera, et cetera?
You do.
Well, it's actually, those decisions would have been made. Well, it's actually, those decisions would have been made in two thousand and nine. The election was in two thousand and two.
Those decisions went through two thousand and nine, and I believe the last meeting was in two thousand and, early summer two thousand and ten. And they finally came to the intergovernmental agreement between the county and the municipalities, and then it appeared on the referendum.
See, we had four million dollars in the Parks and Recreation.
Four point eight.
Yeah. And I think a half a million for fire, you know, which.
Oh, no, sure.
Well, not, well, we have to, you have to spend the four point eight million on park.
Yes.
I, I think we, we talked about this in a recent council meeting, and I remember joking, and we said, who's going to decide? And this is, Mr. Cummins is going to recommend what we allocate, where we allocate the money, and then we're going to do what he tells us to do. But here's, the reason is, you have to be very broad in what you ask for because you're restricted once you give the money to that area. If you say, I'm going to spend a hundred thousand on new bathrooms and you don't need one, you're going to, you don't have any place else to go with it. So, make it real broad, safety, public safety or something, then you can do fire or police or whatever. So, we have to be real careful what we ask for because if you get it, you're restricted.
So, we had four, four million dollars in the last SPOSS. We never spent four million dollars on Parks and Rec.
No, sir, we're, we're still collecting, and we are currently spending some Parks and Rec on, paying for the community center.
Community center?
Yes, sir.
Love that?
Yeah.
Where's that?
Why?
It's one of those backdoor GO bonds. Oh, but we've been paying for the wow all along.
It does not deface until two thousand and nineteen, I believe.
But we're not spending four million dollars on that.
It's, it's going to be north of three. So, it's left, left on that one. Anyway, I'm sorry. I just want to correct myself.
All right. Utility deposit policy?
Yes, in your, in your package, Council, you have three pages, I believe? If I could just point out.
I mean, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Then you should have the utility deposit policy as labeled such, and then the utility deposit refund application. I just want to make sure that.
That's what I.
The policy was supposed to be hard covered and handed out, so I could email it to everybody.
And if I'll just make a couple of quick notes, and I'll open the floor for any questions you may have. The policy, the deposit policy that we've put in front of y'all that we would like for Council to consider is basically just states what the current policy is, the current deposit policy, and then opens up the option of a few items, one of which is to allow residential owner occupants to have the possibility to have their deposit refunded to them via credit on their utility bill. That's one of the options. They must meet a few criteria, having a good payment history in the policy. It says two years. I understand that may be some, there may be some concern with two years. Of course, that's open to whatever Council chooses, one year, two year. Another item that it does, it does allow us to waive the requirement of a deposit if a returning customer is coming in. I know that's been a, an issue that wants, that Council wanted to address is if some of the customers came back to the City of Kent and they were longstanding, had good, good credit history, we could have the option to waive the deposit for those customers. The policy is stated, does permit the city to require a reapplication of a deposit if a good standing customer otherwise becomes default. And the last item, the change, if you will, that we put on this policy is we changed the commercial deposit to all to one hundred. Right now, for commercial accounts, it is analogous to the residential deposit, and that is fifty dollars for an owner occupant and a hundred dollars for a tenant. Management recommends that we change all business deposits to one hundred dollars. Aside from that, open the floor, any questions? Mr. Rusk?
Ethan, the unclaimed utility deposits, at what point, you have five hundred thousand dollars in there, at what point do you identify a deposit to be unclaimed? I mean, you got this fund there, and nobody ever applies for a claim or a refund because both of them are dead or something. How do you, at what point do you take it out of that fund, say, this is unclaimed, this is now income to the city? Boom, it's ours.
State law, and say, Georgia, Mr. Dyer, correct me if I'm wrong, that requires us for uncollected money to be submitted to the state after.
Give it, give it to the state. Goes to the state.
Goes to the state and to a court.
So, we never tell them, right? Why would we ever identify it? Then we'll just leave it in the unclaimed. Yeah, but you, but how do you, how do you, where do you decide? Do you go through them and filter through and say, this one's not claimed? Says for fifty years or something?
Three years. Three years, that for some reason.
If, if they've moved away and we know they're in the council, three years later we're supposed to give it to the state, that's what the eschiette is, it's called. Eschiette, it eschiettes to the state.
Oh, okay.
And then that's where you, you see people advertising getting unclaimed funds. That's what they're looking at, the list of funds the state's holding that has been turned over from places like banks.
Runs the course of the state fund, the state fund.
If that's not state money, the, the state holds it waiting for people to come.
Yeah, but if they, if they never show themselves.
Would you, would you mind reading the requirements for a good payment history there? I, I, I don't have my, I have read it, but I don't have it in front of me. It seemed somewhat harsh to me, to say the least.
Certainly. Property owners of residential accounts are eligible to receive a refund of their utility deposit in the form of account credit upon request by application of satisfaction of two current consecutive years of account activity without the occurrence of delinquent payments, assessed penalties, and/or return payments for non-sufficient funds.
So, if you were one day late in two years, you couldn't get your money back? That's a little bit harsh. And, and another thing, I think I asked, and I don't know, I remember what your opinion was without actually doing the research, but do you recall a conversation about, how many people do you think of our customers would not have been late at least once in a two-year period?
Well, and Mayor, I, I started to comment to you when we had this discussion that I don't consider someone that comes in, if they have a payment due, for example, our, our utility payments are due Thursdays. So, if you're due today and your payment gets to us tomorrow, there's a good chance, an almost one hundred percent chance, you will not be labeled as late. Because right now, I consider late, and one of the only search criteria I have with my, with the six thousand accounts is if a penalty is applied to your account.
Right.
So, so someone let the cat out of the bag, we never apply penalties the very day after. We, we're almost always applying it on a Monday or a Tuesday afterward, which essentially gives people a, a few days grace, if you will. But I say that because I can't do a search or say, you know, did Mayor Hogg do, was he two days late? Because I probably don't know that, or, or that's not one of the flags within the software system. To, to actually run that report, I did inquire about that. It's actually a little more difficult and complex than just running a quick report. So, I'm still working on that number for you.
John, do you make allowance for, I mean, last year, we had an ice storm that shut down, U.S. Postal Service didn't deliver. I mean, certainly, do you make allowance, somebody might be two or three days late because there's no mail?
We always make allowances. I mean, we have to use some, some discretion, you know, on, we always.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think this has ever happened, but I get an automatic deposit from my bank account, I think, and if the bank failed to, to do that, I mean, is there a, I, I think what you're trying to create is a policy which gives you some discretion because there isn't, somebody isn't labeled as late until you determine there's a penalty due. And that's where you, the chief financial officer, has some discretion to allow flexibility on that. So, as harsh as this might seem, it could be softer when there's a problem. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Do you recall, do you recall, John, when, it hasn't been too long ago that people started calling, if there's getting charged a late payment because of the bank or their credit card, something was supposed to been paying the bill automatically, and I don't know exactly what the scenario was, but several people got charged late penalties that, you know, it was sort of out of their control, I guess.
Well, I, I got charged, I got charged one of those fees because they were taking it from the wrong bank.
You can't get your deposit back.
Well, no. No, it was really, it was all right. Flexibility, he knew that it was, it was internally.
The problem that existed was when a person went out of the bag, and Wells Fargo is probably a good example. Wells Fargo accumulates those things so that it can take up to a week before we get it. So, you go out and tell Wells Fargo to pay it, and we're a week later receiving it. Or even longer because it could take even additional days. We've seen as much as ten days lag between the date that the check has and the date we receive it. And when that problem arose, if you'll remember, we changed the procedures in-house so that the date of receipt, the date to, to payment is, is the date that we receive it right at the front desk, so we don't have any delays relative to in processing in the house. But we have no control over how long Wells Fargo or a bank takes to mail that check to us.
What would, what would, what would be wrong with just not requiring a deposit of homeowners?
That would be up to Council.
I mean, not required to begin with. I, I personally, I don't have an objection to that. Then you don't have to worry about late payments or anything else.
You still have to worry about late payments.
And the problem, why wouldn't you have to worry about it?
I mean, we still want to get late payments.
But you don't have to worry about, okay, this guy's a day late, so we, we can't let him have his refund. That's administrative stuff you got to deal with.
Just let him take care of discretionary, and he's not going to let you out.
Well, I, I'm, I'm always concerned about government officials having too much discretion.
Well, that's not too much.
Collected officials. And when you have too much discretion, it leads to a little bit of distrust sometimes. For instance, my payment might be late, and he might realize that I had a broken leg on my way, and I crawled halfway, but I still got a penalty, okay? And he wipes it out. Well, the next thing you know, somebody looks and says, well, Mayor didn't have to pay that penalty, and he was two days way past penalty date. It's, and while you understand it, I think it, it leads to a little bit of, well.
I'm a pretty nice guy.
I know you are. And I hope you're here forever, but you never know that, you know?
Of course.
Okay. Go ahead.
I know only one thing, it says, I mean, either you, you choose to have discretion or you choose to have a fixed and fast rule and never deviate from it. So, I mean, that's your, that's your two choices.
And Council will like this. We, we can reword the policy to make it a little bit more flexible.
What if you had something like, you know, two late payments in twenty-four months that exceeded fifteen days or ten days late?
We certainly could. That'd be administratively, that'd be very difficult to.
The question would be, what, what's the deposit for?
Security.
When would, when do we ever use the deposit?
They don't pay.
Only if they don't pay way.
If we've never used the deposit in two years, you give it back to them.
Just very simply, regardless, is what you're saying. That would be the simplest, I guess.
We don't, we don't need the deposit if they never have notice to money.
But, but, I mean, what if they walk the bill?
The problem is not getting property owners, from what I can understand.
That's great, that, I agree, and, and that's what I've been told by staff, is that that is not the problem. Therefore, before you start going and making too many conditions, it, it may just be as easy to say owner occupants, residential owner occupants, there is no deposit.
I would say one more thing is that if somebody is perennially late, I don't know what number we want to put on it, then we ask for a deposit. Because they're putting us at risk of walking away.
Yeah, many utility departments do that. If, if an account is late, they have.
When you start abusing the fact that we do not have a deposit, then we won't ask for one.
Well, that's not really putting us at risk, though, because they own the property. They live there.
We shut them off, you know?
We can lean on the property as well.
Yeah, we put a lien on their real estate.
Abith, we don't want to do that.
No, I don't want to do it, but it's there.
I think not, not asking for a deposit period is, is the best idea. You know, even Gas South, not even asking for one. So, you know, they're a huge conglomerate, has got lots of customers, a lot more than what we have. They don't ask for one. They dropped that policy, and lots of others are starting to follow that. Anyhow, if we're the number one city in Georgia, hey, that might be another reason to bring more people in, you know? Alfonso's asking, John Muriel's asking for one, but we don't ask for one.
Why don't we vote on, why don't we vote on, that kind of makes the suggestion, we can vote on the, exactly the deposit policy as it stands. If that fails, then we can go to one that says.
We, we're not going to vote tonight.
Oh, I mean, we could on, on the next voting meeting.
Well, we, we will, we may do that. I mean, you like.
One or the other, one or the other.
Yeah. Anyone else have anything on that? Okay, next item. Discussion of Canton's offer of landslot to Cherokee Board of Education, Mr. Hudson.
Well, my reason for asking this to be put on the agenda is that I want to be, as I said at the last meeting, in front of this issue because we've got a lot, an awful lot, we've got our city at stake with this decision. And we sure have many resident, many business residents, their employees, and their employees, and their families potentially at risk. And I think that this decision is a, is a pretty high speculative gamble. As I named, have been calling it, I think it has the possibility of being the next boondoggle in this Cherokee County. I'm very much opposed to, to it, and I know I'm probably, well, I won't go into that. So, the reason I asked for this, and I get to the point quick, bad one, is that I want to have some type of idea of who's going to sit down and have this discussion, when the discussion is scheduled. And I understand, and I found out right before the meeting, that there is a planned meeting scheduled. And I don't want anybody to go to that meeting with carte blanche, saying that they can do this or they can do that, and make any type of suggestion. And I say suggestion with that underlined. I know they can't make a commitment because it'd have to come back to Council. But I don't want suggestions that tend, many times tend to lead to a vote that may not be what at least I think is the right thing to do. So, there's certain issues that I think that should be included in that, and they might have to go in the form of a resolution. If it's, the meeting is to take place before we have another council meeting where we can vote on it, and I don't know if that meeting, Mr. Mayor, is scheduled before the nineteenth of our next meeting, it, it is. But maybe we should have a called meeting of the executive session to have that discussion. I just think it's just, we have way, way too much at risk of making a bad decision, one that's going to be very, very difficult, if ever, recovered from. And that's the reason I asked for it. I don't want to discuss the details here. I think that should be done in executive session downstairs before the committee or whoever is going to be designated to represent the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Cummins? Just one last statement. The mayor's asked me to participate in that meeting, and I've heard from all council members as to their wishes relative to this topic, and we are relaying those wishes in the discussions. We have not, and I don't think we intend to, enter into any consensus of proposed agreement or anything like that. So, it is going to be this body that decides or moves forward in whatever direction the Board of Education may propose. It will be brought back to this body. It won't weaken, and, correct me if I'm wrong there.
We do not have the authority to do that.
We don't have the authority to do it.
The Council's the only one that does that.
I realize you don't, but it just, as an example, just for simple discussion, so maybe people will better understand. When we were talking about, and I don't want to bring this up for a discussion, but to just use as an example of discussion, how we're going to handle a fire station up in Laurel Canyon.
I think we've made that clear, that the Council favors retaining acreage for that.
Okay, but my point was not necessarily that, but I. Okay, but my point was not necessarily that, but I'm glad to hear that. My point is, is that we were having, Mr. Grant was having discussions, and Buzz McRue were having discussions in coming up with these ideas, which I guess was their, um, uh, direction given by the mayor is to come up with the ideas. And, and, but I think that direction should be from this council as to what the ideas should be. Did, did I, did I make myself?
Confuse me, I don't know about anybody.
I did, I did.
What directions have I been giving you?
No, the direction, the, the committee, no, the committee came up with a direction.
Which committee? Oh.
I'm sorry if I'm confusing you.
Oh, okay.
Well, we are talking about, I'm using that as an example as to why I'm asking what I'm asking for.
I, I can't give another elected official a direction. I can offer a suggestion or a recommendation. But they're independently elected people that have a mind of their own. And to get any suggestion that they would follow everything that I say is probably not, not a real good one.
Mr. Meyer, that's not what I'm trying to, I, I, just, that's not what I was saying, but that's, I can't put it in a word, so just, I'll, I'll just.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I mean, it was in good faith, believe me.
I'm sure it was, I'm sure.
It wasn't taking a knock at you or Sandy or Phil or anybody. I was trying, I, I'm just so concerned about this whole situation.
Okay, I mean, uh, uh, F, we already.
We already done.
No, we didn't do that.
Oh, you haven't.
F is discussion requirements for mandatory second entrances subdivisions, okay? This issue is separate from the zoning as far as, uh, in the, uh, master plan of Soleil. Although I guess it may have, actually, this was brought up before that, uh, master plan revision was, was ever came about. And it came to our attention after years of neglect, so to speak. And, uh, probably what, twelve months ago, maybe, or whatever, been, been a while. And, you know, I, like I said earlier, this predates anybody on this council. So, I mean, I guess we had no reason to even be thinking of that, hey, we oughta go check the number of houses up there and make sure that they comply with the, the agreements and the ordinances that were in effect in two thousand, whatever, two thousand one or two, whatever. But once we find out now that there was an ordinance on the book and there is an ordinance on the book for any subdivision, any subdivision, I'm concerned that any subdivision that only has one entrance in which, uh, was built at a time that there was an ordinance that said anything more than a hundred and ninety-nine's homes would have a second entrance. I'm concerned that we might have some liability there now that we know something and do not enforce it. Now, you may, you may agree or disagree, I don't know. I, I would be, I would be concerned. And I guess what do we do about it? Do, do we have the authority, uh, to, you know, stop building permits in areas where this happens? Until, uh, a second entrance is, is, is located there. My guess is it would be a hard sell on those subdivisions that, uh, whose plans were approved without one. It might be kinda hard to do that. I don't know, and I'm assuming there's some of those out there. So, but I think we gotta think about this, what, what are we gonna do? It's, it's, it's gonna, and how do we, how do we, the next one, how do you mandate somebody have two entrances? If you don't enforce the one you got, the ordinance you've got already? I don't know, hey, if you don't enforce this, I mean, you can't expect anybody else to go along with it either. It's kinda, it.
The only two I'm aware of right now that exceed that are, of course, Laurel Canyon. And the other one is Mountain View. But in Mountain View, they're not building it, and they got two hundred and sixty homes or somewhere in that neighborhood. So, I don't know of any other.
Boy, that's a heck of a hill coming up there.
And that's, that's a terrible single exit, as we all.
How about that, what, y'all have to?
We don't, we don't even have sidewalks.
I don't think you have over two hundred homes in there, do you?
Uh, no, it wouldn't be that many, now three of those subdivisions, I wouldn't think.
I don't think so, I, I'm only aware of the two, of those two right now. But the question that you need to address since other, I don't know what Summer Walk has and if that would ever exceed it. Ken, you know if they would ever exceed two hundred homes?
But they got two.
Have they got two entrances?
Which subdivision, sir?
Summer Walk. I've been through it.
Summer Walk does have two entrances.
We probably don't have any others that are currently in development. But going forward, we're gonna have some more, we're gonna have.
Sure, yeah, at some point.
At some point, yeah.
So, I mean, we can just, you'll say something.
You said that you didn't know about enforcing, since we haven't enforced it in the past. We absolutely can enforce it. We're a governing body. If we can enforce parking, then not enforce parking, then enforce parking. We can certainly enforce an ordinance that has more safety value than parking. So, I, I, that said, and I'd like to see this never, ever happen again, that another council in the city of Canton has to catch up. So that when we receive a plan of two hundred or more homes, that we see that entrance built when the roads are built, without any question, it's just done.
Absolutely, that's, that should be. And, and, and hope, the question though is, uh, how, how do we, how do we deal with that, those existing subdivisions now that do not have that entrance? No particular one, but at least the, the ones that we're, oh, John.
Yeah, thank you, okay, go ahead. I think, I think there's a little bit more we have to look at, and that is when a subdivision gets bigger than what would be supported by two entrances, we have to look at at what point do we require a third? I, I would really like to see the number, the threshold, the first, second, the first opportunity to force a second entrance threshold to be bumped up, maybe a hundred homes or whatever. I, I, I'm not saying in deference to the SEC or anybody else, but maybe a two ninety, a one, two ninety-nine or something, bump it a hundred. Because I'm not sure the requirement of a hundred is, is logical and good when you might force them at nine hundred to be up to three entrances. You know what I'm saying? Because you can't just say at two hundred, you go to two entrances and at a thousand fifty or a thousand five hundred, you still have two entrances, that doesn't make any sense. At some point, you have to require a third entrance. And the other big issue we got, which you have same issue you have up in Soleil and Laurel Canyon, is the fact that the guy that came in here with that master plan ten years ago isn't there anymore. You've got pieces of these developments that have been sold off. There is no one entity that's controlling anymore. You can't put one guy's feet to the fire because he wasn't the guy who committed the sin. So, it's, it's a problem, and I think we have to figure out how to address that problem, it's not simple.
I agree with Mr. Huffman on that though, I mean, he, they bought into it. You know, if you, if you go buy into, if you go buy a piece of a, a major development that was, the development was sold to the city and the city approved it with certain conditions. Then I think, if you buy a piece of that, I think you're hung with those, uh, conditions to go along with that. I mean, it looks legal.
Well, the conditions were that at two hundred, you have a second entrance, and we didn't do that. We, the city enforced that issue.
We didn't enforce it, but, but that's, once again, that doesn't necessarily mean that we, we waived it.
This, this might be something that, that Fuhrer can comment on. The city is not obligated to tell the developer and let, give him notice that there's a second exit required if it's on the master plan. They, by the signature on that master plan approval, they're on notice.
But if, if you, if you become a developer when you're up to five hundred already and you're going to nine hundred or whatever, what happens if you, you're, you're taking over the original plan which has been deviated from?
Whatever the master plan, the master plan has that nine hundred, shows.
I, I listened to the legal argument this guy made and I, I don't wanna say anything about that right now.
But he's, he's doing a good job, he's trying to fix, fix the.
Let's keep, let's try to keep this as much.
Okay, but to answer Ms. McRue's question, I think.
Aside from Soleil, this is generic, this is any subdivision that, uh, would be built like.
To answer, I think that question where a subdivision, like Whispering Hills, I think, is that the name of it?
I'll show, I, yes.
Where there's only one entrance and exit. Is that in the master plan, it probably just had one entrance, one exit, and it was approved. So, they met their commitment. Now, were we wrong in possibly not asking for the second? Yeah, we could've been wrong there. But that's the way, the difference between what their development is and then the one that we've been talking about this, this, tonight, is that they have a master plan, they know what they needed to do. They just either ignored it or didn't do their research.
One last point, I mean, I heard the comment made that a new developer bought into the conditions of the master plan. And I concur with that, but when it came to streets, they didn't buy into finishing the streets. And I don't see the difference between two entrances and finishing the streets. If they bought that and they knew those streets were unfinished, what's the difference from that and buying into the subdivision and, and, and knowing that there's a need to do second gate?
But they didn't, but they didn't buy the whole subdivision, they bought a piece of it, so.
Yeah, but the only, the only thing I can say the difference might be is that they would have a right to assume the city did its due diligence and had a bond to finish all those streets that weren't finished. That's the only thing.
As a key for future, so we don't get in this thing, as Mr. Grue states, is that we have a bond, we put up a bond, they, they put up a bond.
Sure. We'll leave it at that.
Well, anyone else have any other comments? Well, we do a lot of talking, we're gonna have to start doing some doing here, quick, you know? No, we're not, we're not gonna vote today.
We'll move on to the next.
Let's go.
How about eggs and softens?
That's what it looks like.
All right, let's move on. All right, discussion of irrigation meter charges.
The last time that I brought this up, I told you about people that were sending, uh, turning out off and then reconnecting. And we only had a twenty-five dollar fee. And the question was thrown out, well, how many do that with their regular service when there's no birds? And I believe we only found one. So the answer is that we got about thirty people a year who find it advantageous to shut off when they head south, or I assume they head south, uh, to shut off their irrigation system. And then we charge twenty-five dollars to reconnect. It's not only expensive, it costs us more than twenty-five dollars to do. We're gonna recommend at the next meeting that we change the reconnect fee to fifty dollars so that they're not doing it to create just a financial cost on the city and a financial advantage to them.
I like it. I think that, I think that will help address that problem.
Item H, I guess.
Yeah, I, uh, fire station architect selection process.
I'll just be quick, we have issued an RFP, you just do it back in here. Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, we've issued it, I believe, to four or five, at least four architects and maybe a five, fifth, five architects. That, uh, one of them, and I won't mention the name, but because they're local and it's not anyone that's doing any business with us now, may not qualify because of the requirements we have relative to having designed fire stations. So, we may suggest when we bring those back to you that we'll include it, but we aren't gonna be in any basis to recommend because of insufficient experience doing any fire station.
Okay, that's where we stand. Uh, update on parking, uh, Mr. Young, you got anything on that?
Yes, I do. And I made y'all print a copy of the downtown parking zone map for your reference to look at. As you know, on December eighth, we held a special meeting to discuss the parking problems downtown. And we voted to suspend enforcement and Councilman Grant and I were asked to look into the issue and bring back recommendations. We held a public meeting on December sixteenth at O'Neil intersection with a group of residents, business owners, several council members, the mayor was there. And I feel like we had a very productive exchange of ideas and had got a lot of good input. And Councilman Grant and I then met with Chief Mitchell to get the police department's input and to find out what was possible in terms of technology and personnel. Chief Mitchell then went back to his command staff to get their input. And then we met again to come up with our options and recommendations. As we see it, there are two basic options, we either do full enforcement or we don't enforce at all. We discussed several partial enforcement options, uh, but the staff, police department staff felt that they would be ineffective and create more problems than they solved. So they recommend full enforcement or no enforcement. The two people that were hired to do the enforcement so impressed the chief that he has sent them to the academy to become regular sworn officers. And so if we, when we decide to restore enforcement, we would have to hire new parking enforcement personnel. If we decide to hold off on enforcement for the time being, we could postpone that hiring. And actually, the chief has checked and found out that we could return the equipment that we bought and repurchase it at the time we started enforcement. And he tells me there's already an upgrade available to the equipment we bought. As you know, with technology. So that is an option. Per our discussion with the business owners and residents and customers and visitors, we recommend that we change the time limit on parking spots in several areas. We would make the parallel parking spots on North Street between the courthouse and the businesses eight hour, except for the handicap spots. That would be zone five.
That would be, what, eight hour?
Eight hour. One of the issues that came out in the meeting with the business owners was especially some of the law offices, if they have personnel that are physically unable or have issues with making it to the eight hour parking that exists now. And there was an issue with not enough eight hour parking, they felt, that was easily accessible for all their personnel. So we would make that change. We would make the spots on East Main Street, past East Mary Island Street, which is basically from the corner where Mr. Grant's building is down, past the dance studio. We would make those spaces three hour. And that would be in zone? Three. Is it four? Yeah, four. Zone four.
That'll get by.
And then we would make the two spots in front of the painted pig, twenty minute spots. And that would help out the pharmacy and the coffee shop to make those spots more available.
Zone three would be twenty minutes, just a couple?
No, just two spots right in front of where the painted pig is, which would be in zone three. And we would change, there are currently where the cleaners was, where Cherokee cleaners was, there are currently four twenty minute parking spaces. I have heard that someone is planning to reopen the cleaners, I don't know if that's actually true or not. If that does happen, we would actually reduce that to two because we think that's adequate.
I talked to him two days ago and he said there's an upscale antique.
Yes, I heard it was not, not the cleaners, but I don't know for sure, but I heard it was.
Cleaner's been moved. They're moving over to Bill Kids.
No, he's closing, that one, he's closing.
Okay, well, in that case, then we would take those twenty minutes, make those two hour parking also. And then there are three spots right in front of the growler store. And there's a, I'm not sure when they're opening, but there's a shipping store apparently going in right there. So we would make those three spots twenty minute for those businesses. And we would recommend, even if we do not restart enforcement immediately, that we go ahead and make signage changes so that the public can get accustomed to the idea. When enforcement does resume, we recommend that the first citation be a warning. And the chief has assured with equipment that they use knows if it's a warning, if you've had a warning when you run the tag number, so it's, the equipment can handle that. And then the second citation or a third citation would actually be carry a fine and probably increase the fine. Cause our goal is. Because our goal is to stop the habitual offender, not to catch the casual visitor or the customer that's coming in. And we feel that would help with that. We would also recommend implementing an online payment system for the tickets because that was a major issue with the citizens. And it created quite a problem also for the police department. I've been told they actually had to install a camera in their lobby because of the?
Wow.
The people acting out, uh, which who would risk a jail term for parking ticket? I don't know. But anyways. And there does not appear at the moment to be a large issue with the parking absent enforcement, even though several business owners told us that other employees, downtown employees started parking on the street the next morning after we stopped the boarding. They have been there ever since. But it would only take, we figure, one or two more restaurants opening for lunch or something to happen with the John's Building or a couple of retail outlets for it to become an issue again. We feel that if you keep suspending enforcement, it's also part of one of the problems we find, we think, happened with the last time when we restarted enforcement. People had gotten so accustomed to no enforcement that they just really rebelled against the idea. So we feel like you don't want to get people accustomed to no enforcement again. And I think with these changes, um, it might be much more effective and valuable. So that is our recommendation.
How, how would this address the shuffling situation? Does this, does this have an effect on it?
Would still be in effect. So it would, unless, we have to decide if we still want to keep the shuffling as part of the enforcement. We can take that out because it is a separate item. But if we kept enforcing, it would still be, you'd catch the habitual offender. Because if someone got a warning in one half of zone three and then the next violation is another half of warrant zone three, then they would get a ticket.
Is that warning, uh, and then the next ticket is a fine?
Yes.
Is it, is, what period of time does that cover? Could that be any time for the next year or two or the next month?
Uh, in our discussion with the chief, we were saying 30 days.
30 days, okay.
But we could set any basic timeline on we wanted. We could say two weeks. We could say, you know, months. We wouldn't want it to be too long of a period because?
Yeah.
Anybody that works downtown, you stop to run any, you get hung up. It happens to all of us.
Yeah.
But some reasonable length of time.
Okay. Mr. Canna?
Only one question, uh, and that's in zone five, where we had those two spots for the pharmacy drive-in. Are you eliminating them?
Well, we were changing, basically making the two spots in front.
Is he good with that?
I talked to him about it. I haven't specifically talked about those two spaces. And we can, this is open for discussion, but the people that need to be close to his door really need to come in the front door because the stairs in the back.
But he runs out, so he has to.
Yeah, and it was just, it was basically swapping the fronts for the back.
Okay.
For him. And we can make adjustments if it needs to be.
Which one would be, you think, the energy used to be right there would, it's a big credit allocation ability. Which one do you think you would prefer, the front or the back?
I think I would prefer the front. And I can have, I can go talk to him again about it before we make any decisions, but.
Okay.
I know when past discussions with him, their big problem when the street skate came in was it took his handicap spots from his front door.
Yeah.
And that's been a problem for his customers. So if you get easy access at his front door, I think that would help him much more. But I'll have that discussion with him.
One, one last question for me, and it might be go to the chief. Uh, one of the complaints I have gotten where really people have gotten hot, which one, the tires sitting on the line.
We have had that discussion with him and he is in agreement with us. We have young people trying to impress. They do a really bang up job, but they're a little enthusiastic. So he is definitely going to be tempering and making him more, you know, just kind of if you're over the line, then yes, if you're touching the line, that kind of thing.
Anyone else?
I appreciate that very much.
All right, um, discussion of street light approval authority.
We have relative to approval of the street lights at the community sta, Canton overlay zone, community standards ordinance. It's ambiguous as to who really approves that coming in. Northside is going to be submitting a lighting plan, streetlight plan, plan. The ambiguity questions whether or not the Department of Planning and Zoning could approve that plan, whether it had to go to possibly the zoning board of appeals or the city council. What I'm going to ask you to do next meeting is decide who has the authority to make those decisions relative to the Canton overlay zone, community standards ordinance or in that area. And that's all I'm going to do is say, tell us who, so that when we get the streetlight plan from Northside, we know how to move it forward.
Jack?
If I understand, talking to you before, where the city's going to be paying for that power bill?
Paying for that power bill.
So in my opinion, I think, and I'm just giving my opinion, it really doesn't matter. But what I, what I want to say is that if, if we're making that decision, that we're going to be paying the power bill, I think the council needs to be the people making that decision and not someone else because we're representing all the citizens.
That's what the question might be, though, is that the current overlay zone ordinance doesn't necessarily specify a, well, it doesn't specify the particular bulbs that you're talking about. And I don't know how, whether you want to change the ordinance or how you want to address this new, more efficient bulb. Again, we're just going to ask you, who do you want to approve it? And if you think it's the council, then so be it. We'll bring whatever's, uh, proposed to the council and the council then make the, the decision moving forward.
Kind of like the real estate swap.
Jack?
All right.
All right.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Maybe, uh, there could be a threshold where the council needs to get involved because certainly with the, the hospital, you've got a whole parkway. Where are you going to, you're going to ask the council to make a decision on one light, two lights, 10 lights?
Yeah.
So, so I'm saying is that that's where I, I, I think Jack had to be careful. We don't want to have every big thing come up.
But I think to this, it would always be a big deal because it's a master plan. It is a plan of an area.
Yeah, of course.
And so who approves that?
That's what, that's what's happening.
Well, if there's any other master plan.
The, the ordinance allows, or it is unclear as to whether the staff, really the choice in the ordinance is between staff or zoning board of appeals. Is it a change in the master plan and therefore has to go through the master plan amendment process?
But now we come back to us.
Only, only because if they're planning a zoning, if we're zoning board of appeals, it would not. The board of zoning appeals doesn't come back to you.
No, no, but if it's a change in the master plan. Who approves the change in a master plan?
The council ultimately.
Okay.
But I, what is the, I, I don't have it in front of me.
It says developers shall provide street skate within the development, including sidewalks on both sides of each street, landscape, park benches, decorative lampposts, and that's the key, the decorative lamps, in accordance with the Canton overlay zone, community standards ordinance.
And, and that.
Then it says, the street skates and lighting plans shall be submitted for coordination and approval of the Department of Planning and Zoning.
And it, and it would be a variance from the master plan. And they, and that was the theory, it would go to the board of zoning appeals. I think that's what, the choice originally, this all started with, can the staff do it or does it have to go through some process?
That's correct.
We wanted the staff to be able to do it because it was a simple change. It turned out not to be a simple change. And, and so, but it's really asking the council to interpret that, to say, can the staff do it or not? If you want to do it, if the city council wants to do it, the city council could just do it. Because there's a room in there for the staff to do it. So certainly the city council can do it, if the staff can do it.
But because it's ambiguous, the staff doesn't want to make the decision.
Unless you tell them to.
Unless you tell them that we have the authority to do it.
But if that would be, if the council just did it, would that not be somewhat of a, a, a change from the procedure for nor, normal procedure for approving any change in a master plan?
Well, that, that's the real question is, is it right to the level of a master plan amendment? Because elsewhere in the rules, it allows the staff to do it. The administrator can make a change. So it, that's, you're getting the real debate. Is it a master plan change, therefore has to go through processes, or is it not? And it is not clear because it says both.
Okay, shot that straight out.
You tapped into the question that was asked of me and I said, go to the council. And ask.
And you got the answer. We don't look. Yeah.
Okay, sounds like a variance from a normal, a variance from an ordinance that we already have.
Which would go, which would go to the board of zoning appeals.
That's what it sounded like to me, actually.
Well, except for it has language. It says the staff can do it.
Trying to clean up the computer.
Okay.
But you'll need to, we're asking you to decide it because we know that a proposal is going to come forward and we're going to be in a position, we want to know what avenue or what direction do we forward that proposal for approval.
Okay, let's talk about the end of fiscal year budget amendment.
Mr. Engle.
Mayor, council fellow mind, I'll just real quickly go down the list that you have there in front of you. The impact fee fund budget amendment is for the Northside Hospital, uh, Northside Commerce Drive. That's the impact fees reimbursement to Northside for that drive, the impact fee funds. The SPOS five, that was to close out SPOS five. It is, it is done. Those reduce some residual funds that were transferred actually to SPOS six. The SPOS six is for some Lamig and Lamig projects, SPOS contribution and? And as well as the, the, uh, uh, council chambers. The CBA fund amendment is for the bond refunding. And then in the general fund, I'll hit on a couple, just a couple of the, the larger ones. The $58,000 is for the C manager, the change of C manager. And the $13,796 was for professional services in the municipal court. That was, that's due to the increase in workload that municipal court has.
City manager, we had two last year. So that's why the amount of money is.
Anybody have a question about that? Thank you, Evan. Next item, first reading and discussion.
Just a pouring, yes.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, this is, yeah, this is a pouring license for a location, 269 Marietta Highway. Retanna Stevenson is the outlet manager. Anybody want to pronounce the name of that business?
I'd, I'd like to know what the name of the business is.
You can read it. It's right there.
John M.
I spell that, please.
John M.
That's the name of the business?
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's the new Thai restaurant.
Thai restaurant.
Yeah.
And the old Sony.
No, Sean.
The old Sony.
Oh, okay. Well, that, that's, that's a first reading on that and no vote or anything on that. Let's move on.
Yeah.
Update on the wastewater treatment plan, Mr. Cummins.
Mr. Hattigan, please.
As you've seen, there's a lot of work going on out there. Um, we've got slabs for some of the new basins. They're putting new stone grain across the soccer field now. And we've finalized the revised prices. They all have a pass. Everything's moving along really well.
All right.
That's great.
You're up next as well, I think. So discussion of engineing strategies, change order, number one.
Yeah, this was for the, they finalized all their design services, uh, thanks to the amount of $199,798.
It's, was the design services in the contract that was entitled City of Canton Water Reclamation Facility Improvements, Construction Management and Resident Inspection Services within that same contract?
No, it wasn't. It wasn't in the original contract, no.
So how, why would you mix up design services? What, when you look at that to start with, it looked like you had a original contract price of 344-920 and it went to 544-17 on that contract. That's what it looks like. It looks really like that $199 was then under a separate design contract. That is misleading.
Well, it came about back when we did the, the redesign. Um, and it was just a change, I think of the time.
Council approved during the redesign.
I understand.
And this is the amount of money to pay for the redesign, the revised.
Well, I understand, but why would you issue a change order for a contract that had nothing to do with designing? I mean, that's what puzzles me about it.
Why not a separate?
Separate design, well.
Didn't we have a contract with ESI?
Yes.
It was really just approval payment of the contract. That's what you're saying. Just approved the payment of the contract, not change this one.
Wait, now, you, wait, you got two contracts?
We, we, we have.
Two, you only got one contract with ESI or two?
We have, well, we have the demand services with them as well.
And the demand services?
It's really, that was a step.
Well, when, when we approved, when we approved using ESI to do the redesign, okay, did we not do any kind of contract with them for that or anything?
No, I don't believe, I think it was just, at the time, it was just a change order to that, to a degree, that was a change order to that current contract.
I don't know that we ever agreed to specifically how we were going to handle that, whether that was a new contract or that was to be included in the contract that we had.
That's my question, but it's, it wasn't in that contract. And yet we're amending that contract.
We did amend that contract, you know. We did an amendment to that contract. Because that's where we looked at the, we need to go ahead and look at that. But I think we did an amendment to that contract.
To include design services?
Because we talked about the language of liability and all that. That was going to.
Did you check that? If you did, I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, it's going to come up at the next meeting. We can, we can check that and I.
Make sure we're doing right.
Yeah. I, I know it's been approved and I just don't know whether.
I think we amended that.
I, I will say, though, that when ESI projected the cost to be between $100 and $200,000, and it came in at $199,798, they cut it off, didn't they?
Well, you can answer that.
In actuality, they, you know, they were kind of, you know, under the gun and trying to come up with an estimate without looking at it. And they were aware that this number was out there. And they, they actually did, uh, try to maintain with, keep within that budget. And, you know, my understanding is they probably didn't even invoice for, for some of their hours as well.
I'd like to point out one thing on this, on this sheet, and we provided you this financial sheet for a specific reason. We did not get to a final point of how much we were paying the contractor because of the revised design. They had to go through a significant amount of recalculation. And I kept refusing the amounts they were coming back until they had substantiating details. But if you look at a couple of important factors, if you. But if you look at a couple of important factors, if you look in the middle of the page, the total construction cost, the two columns. You'll see under the original design, the construction cost was, the total construction cost would, would have been seven million, seven hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Now, having said that, that is a derived number because in the redesigned process, we came up with, and you will see this, electrical, storm drainage, forced main relocation, a controls integration and a temporary fence, so a total of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars was left out of the original design and would have been change orders for the first design. But they are included within the contract of the revised construction project. So, in essence, the design costs, we are paying for the design, the revised design costs, and we estimate by the time we get through that we're gonna probably pay for it with about, if you look at the total bottom line, you'll see that there's almost a, uh, four hundred and forty, fifty-seven thousand dollar difference. And that includes paying for the revised design. So we're at alm- over six hundred thousand dollars savings in the revised design minus the two hundred thousand we have to pay for the design itself. So you're getting a two for one at least in return in savings in the construction process. Bottom line is, we're gonna come in and we get a budget and dwell with this budget and I believe we're gonna have a better product when we get through. Of course, that will be attested when we get through and we can go through.
See if maybe other change orders or anything going the other way, we hope not.
Well, the, the reason we haven't asked, we could put in now, and of, and we haven't asked for it yet, we could put, ask the contractor for a credit change order right now. There is no advantage to doing that because we still have one major issue open with the original design that we're not sure is going to work or not. And that has to do with the grit chamber and I won't go into a lot of details about it, but that could be two hundred thousand dollars or a little bit more. And therefore, uh, I don't want, I don't want to come today with a credit change order and tomorrow ask you for that two hundred thousand dollars back. I will explain it once we have the complete analysis on that grit chamber, which we don't have yet.
Okay. Anyone else? Thanks, appreciate it. Uh, discussion of LED lighting McKenn businesses, as, as you heard at our last meeting, now Mr. Kent came in and asked us to try to see if there was something we could do about, I guess, the appearance of some of the exteriors of, of some of the businesses that, uh, one or two had put up some like purple or deep blue LED lights around the windows or up the corners of the buildings or different places like that. Mr. Dyer and I have talked briefly about this and, uh, it's not obviously a simple matter to do. Because I, I think one of the last things we talked about was a possibility of, of, of doing away with colored lights either in the windows or visible, uh, on the outside or visible from, in the windows, uh, colored lights. Of course, I don't know what that would do at Christmas time, when you think about it, you know? If you, then have to decorate in white lights, I guess you did that. But was that pretty much where, where we were looking at that?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I think, I think it, I think there is something to say because I, you are seeing more of that. I started noticing, I hadn't really noticed it until Mr. Kent came in. And, and I did start noticing and I see one side of a building down, uh, near, near, uh, Ingles there that is completely, isn't that his property?
Yes.
It is, it is.
His property. No, 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 I'm talking about on the other side.
It's a smoke shop.
The other, the smoke shop.
Across the street.
But didn't he put it in across the street?
That wasn't him.
No, he did, his tenant did. His tenant did that and he tried to get them to do away with them and they said it was their lease and they could do with it, there wasn't anything that they, he could do about it. That's what he told about it.
I called him enough to have an idea on how to stop that, but I haven't heard back from him yet.
Yeah. Anybody have any thoughts, suggestions, forget it, let's do something?
I think we need to do something about the taggy lights.
I, I agree.
So the question was, is it the color or the lights themselves?
Yes.
The lights themselves for me. But you mentioned holiday and I think that we need to have a provision for holiday decorating.
Let's, so going forward, here's what we do. The ordinance that I have in mind, and I've asked Mr. Patton, Mr. Green for their input, is we would ban lights on the exterior or in a window except as part of a sign. Now, all we need to do is think of all the exceptions.
Yeah, there's a bunch of those, I mean, you got candy service stations that's got lights under them.
Well, and I noticed, oh, Charlie's has a single band of neon light around the entranceway at the top. I drove down, we were just don't look at it no more, when I thought of this idea, who was, who was gonna catch up? And Charlie's had something around it, but no, nobody else did. If, nobody else would have a, a light other than these LED lights.
What about a spotlight, talking about Old Charlie's, and they take a spotlight on the ground?
We already have regulations on that. What we don't have is a regulation either with static lights like these, if they blinked, they're banned. If they, if you do the sequence, they're banned, but a static always on light is not banned. So we just have to, if, if what we do is, what we don't want to, we don't want lights on exterior or, or around a window or in a window except as part of a sign, I think we can do that. Then we're gonna have to think of seasonal and other things.
But could, could it be also that they must be for, for, I don't know how to put it, but, so you can see it now, I mean, it's like around safety?
Well, we can make, well, no, we can make illumination.
Illumination.
We, so you can make an exception for something that is solely for illumination purposes for safety.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm, we gotta think of all the exceptions because there's gonna be a list of them.
Okay, I want to, uh, smoker?
I'd also like to see us enforce the ordinance about, um, how much area, how much space is covered in the windows? I think only thirty percent of a window area can be covered. And we've got filling stations and stores that have ads covering most of their window. I'd say sixty, seventy percent of their window is covered in tobacco ads. And I don't care what ad it is, it's just aesthetically-
That's an ordinance now, so we just need our enforcement officer to go by and measure their windows and ads.
It's aesthetically displeasing, also it's unsafe. If there's a robbery in progress, if the window's covered up, uh, police officers can't see in the business to get a grip on what's going on inside.
That's, we, we have no problem enforcing that, uh, that ordinance.
I think, I think that might be a state ordinance even right now, that you can't have a certain percentage, you know, particularly in, in a gas station or a quick trip or something. Because exactly that, you have to be able to see and if the police come, you have to be able to see if there's a robbery in progress. They can't, you're going to a blind store, you know, bullets might be coming out of them. So here, be, gotta be a little bit careful about one thing, we've got a beautiful downtown Canton, a lot of nice static lights up, that might be LED lights on our trees. Is that a violation?
I, yeah.
That's what I'm gonna-
We're gonna exempt ourselves. We're gonna exempt ourselves. Okay. Just be careful.
See, man.
Next item. Yes. Are we, whoa, 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 we already got those two, uh, what about, are you gonna move that or not? Go ahead.
City manager's report. I had hoped to bring you the Etowah River Park, Carney Park Trail this session. It will be in April. And the reason is, we've had to reroute part of it because we could not get no rise certification. So we are now in the process of laying out that new route, hope to have new rise certification and actual quotes to finish it. We anticipate under a hundred thousand dollars. So we can use a quoting process. That's the first item. The second item is we have received the Northside fees for building of the hospital, the impact fees, the permitting fees, all those fees, it's well over a million dollars. Now, they have a fee waiver request in for waiver of two different parts of those fees. One is based on what they call the construction index. Uh, our index factor, I believe, is point eight eight versus other areas of countries. So they've asked for a waiver of the fees by twelve percent, those that apply to the construction index. Uh, they have asked for a waiver of fees, fifty percent of the water and sewer tab fees, uh, the staff would be recommending against granting the second waiver and we're investigating still the first waiver as to what recommendations they will make.
Fifty percent reduction later.
They wanna save, uh, that's what they want to do, is save money, but, uh, we're, we're gonna recommend, we will recommend against that one. Next item, rental car tax, our estimate of seventy thousand, we have now got three months in. Uh, our annual estimate around seventy thousand dollars is pretty accurate.
You don't have enterprise?
Yeah, I do.
You didn't get any?
We got, we got enterprise in and now based on the three months that they've paid, we compute, four months, sorry, four months that they've paid, we, uh, calculate seventy thousand roughly, more or less than we'll have.
Has Hurst ever started?
Hurst has paid, uh, I guess it's Canton, Lattlers is Canton, they've paid. We're gonna have to go out and look at the car dealers and see how that's working, we haven't done, done that yet.
Sandy was gonna announce-
Annualized, annualized.
Annualized, seventy thousand. Sandy was gonna announce, but it got passed by, uh, we've gotten a LCI planning grant of a hundred and four thousand dollars to which we will add thirty thousand too. And that is been received, uh, so it's official and I guess it's just a matter of thanks to Sandy Bill Grant and Matthew and Mr. Patton, also sorry, Ken, forgot you out there, uh, for putting in and paying that grant. Just as a note on revenues, the electric franchise fee is up eight percent. It's not a significant amount of money, it would say eighty-nine thousand, but the revenues on, in different areas are going up as we see the economy improve. And the last thing I have is, uh, we were voted the eleventh safest city in Georgia. Police department doesn't really want to tout that, he says because if something goes awry, I'm gonna have to take it. And having said that, I will say we did have a shooting last night in the city and that's the first one that I can think of that we've had in the city. It was a drug deal, apparently gone bad and nobody was injured or hurt, but, and the perpetrator is in Hotel Garrison.
You know, uh, you mentioned the safest, safest city, I think, I, if I'm not mistaken, they had Woodstock classified as a medium large city and us as a smaller city. Somehow or another, it was a different classification, I'm not-
Because it was twenty-five thousand is the population break and we're just under twenty-five thousand according to the, uh, uh, latest census and they're twenty-six thousand, they're just over. So they get rated in a different, actually the safest city is our next door neighbor, it was Holly Springs.
Yeah, that was in that class, that size of city because they're below ten thousand. Between ten and twenty-five, we were number two. There's a little city, a little city over on the North Carolina border, I never even heard of it, Groveton or Groveton.
Yeah, that was number one.
Number one in our bracket, in our bracket. And Holly Springs takes all of our police force, so hey, it's our people there anyway.
Well, you know, and I gotta, I gotta compliment Chief Mitchell because he's come up with a fantastic idea and I think it's too bad there's not many more people here to really give him the kudos. He's come up with a fantastic idea, is most police departments wait until the applicants walk in. And what he's gone out and done is he's gone out to the police academy and looked for good applicants and invited them to come and visit us. And doing that, it's like we're courting them and we're getting a better quality officer by doing that rather than wait for them to walk in their doors as they graduate from the academy. And we have hired two police officers that way and very good quality officers.
Well, Chief Merchant started that program because he went to four hundred and four hours of school and hired two people from his school because he was going to school with them, he knew what the good from the bad. Now, it worked really well for him.
Yeah, but while he was in school-
Yeah, he was in school.
Repetuated that program and that's what Chief Merchant left.
Cool, that's cool.
I, I had one question there, something you brought up there about the rental car tax. Uh, Nathan, can you tell us the relative proportionality of the three entities that we have, uh, received monies from? Or the amounts roughly?
Yes, I can, not currently, mayor.
You can what?
I, I'll get that information for you all.
Oh, that'd be fine, yeah, I, I'm just kinda curious as to how Hurst ranks against Enterprise versus the other, you know, to see which one is, uh, I, I would expect Enterprise to be far exceeding the others.
Yeah, top of my head, I think Enterprise is over, just over fifty percent of-
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It doesn't matter, we should send Christmas cards to all three of them. Thank you.
Okay, one of, one of the items I would like to ask our, uh-
I've got one.
Uh, city clerk to make sure at our next meeting, we have on an executive session to discuss real estate.
We got the first reading over here.
Oh, what did I miss? Oh, yeah, I did, okay, I can read my own right now, go right ahead.
I, I, it's only thirty-two pages and I'll read it quickly. Oh, we got, uh, over the past few months discussed all the things we need to do to, uh, fight black, black and, and update our codes, uh, along with our codes for, for maintenance of properties and services. So there's two of them that Bobby's drafted, one is the abatement of nuisance and the other one is a, um, added tax incentive for those properties that need to be redeveloped, to use in their, their language. And, um, these two ordinances will be used by the justice, the judges and any other type of, uh, where they feel fit. This is not a, something that, that the code enforcement officer really needs to be involved with, if there's any question, I don't-
Did I, I just want, correct one thing you said, the, the abatement of nuisance is just, we already have ability to put a lien on the property, but, but it did not comply with state law. So that's changing it so that our lien ability complies with state law, it's process, that's why it's so long. So that one you just should do, that's a, you know, we already had it, we just couldn't do it legally. The other one though, is, is, is not done by the court, it's done by the city council. Where you would declare a property to be, uh, or the city manager would with appeal rights to the, to the city council. That one you probably want to take a little bit of a look at. It's, it's, we'll only be the second of jurisdiction to do it, that I know of.
So are we in a position to, uh, consider the, either or both of these as a first reading?
The abatement of nuisance certainly, and, and both of them, and, but I do want you to look at that tax one because there's a, I just put in what Acworth had and some of the numbers that you may not agree with and, but we want to understand that process. It's just another tool, as opposed to going and fixing it ourselves and putting a lien on the property. We would declare it blighted, you raise the taxes until they fix it and then you actually lower their taxes. So what you would need to decide is the proportion of raising and lowering.
So this is something that, uh, this would be dropped to council, council, each individual?
I don't remember, is the council doing it or?
Oh, I see, Matthew, you would probably set the, the percentages and we would then bring the amounts. Wouldn't that be it, you'd set the percentages by council?
Right, it, but the determination of whether a property qualifies, I think it had it, I'd have to look at it again, I did this a couple of months ago. I think the city manager does it with appeal rights to the city council. Well, I, I may have made it the city council deciding, I, anyway, somebody does besides the judge.
Well, wouldn't code enforcement have to-
There are certain criteria that have to be met, and that's, that's what you also need to look at, is the criteria. I think it had, you know, three, three out of five or something like that.
In terms of nuisance, does this apply only to buildings?
Yeah, well, no, no, it's any abatement of any nuisance.
Including smell?
No, which one, which one are we talking about? The abatement of nuisance or the tax, abatement of nuisance is any nuisance.
Okay. Okay, we have, this, we'll consider this a first reading on, we can do both of them?
Yeah, you can do both of them.
They're two separate ordinances.
Okay, but I see that, I mean, there's, there's, we have a copy of one here, and the other one, is that all it says?
No, they both have an attachment.
They both got pages.
Both gonna have more than what's here, right?
Yeah.
Is there an attachment?
This is, this is the abatement of.
We just got this, right?
This is the abatement of nuisance.
Oh, okay.
I wanna say that.
Okay.
There's a text, there's something attached to that.
Oh, okay, so we are, have a first reading of those, those two ordinances then?
And you can not have a second reading if you so choose to change or whatever.
Okay, yeah.
So for change, we have to read again?
Not necessarily.
No. Any, any, anyone else have anything else, if not?
Make a motion adjourned.
Okay, okay, those are fair?